The retreat is coming, you are all. The assemblies of God, Sharja, the Tamil village of Sarbaga are coming. I am sitting here in the corner of the toilet. You will use it. Only that, when you reach the end of the road, when you get tired, you will ask for it with your government. God, in this world, he has come to us. We all, in our homes, raise our heads and look at him. We all look at him and pray. Anyone who looks at him, we all, God, God, Lord, God, God, only looking at him, we pray to him, dear God, we pray to him. We all, we all, we pray to him, dear God, we pray to him. Anyone who is faithful, we all look at him and pray, dear God, we pray to him. We pray to him, dear God, we pray to him, dear God, hallelujah, hallelujah. All thanks to you, all thanks to you, you have saved our lives, you have saved our children. You have changed our children, you are grateful, you are grateful, you are grateful, dear God. We pray to you, we are grateful, you have come to us. We are grateful, you are grateful, we all, we pray to you, dear God, hallelujah, hallelujah. We pray to you, dear God, we pray to you, we have experienced happiness for you. We pray for your peace, we pray for your faith, we pray to you, dear God. Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. In our lives, you have created and operated the world. We pray to you, we are grateful, we are grateful, we pray to you, dear God, we pray to you, hallelujah, hallelujah. Dear God, you have given us a good life. Dear God, you have given us a good life, we pray to you. This day, this day, you have come to us, you have come to us, you have come to us, you have come to us. You have come to us, you have come to us, you have come to us, you have come to us. We all, we pray to you, dear God, we pray to you, we pray to you, dear God. We are grateful, we are grateful, we pray to you, we pray to you. We pray to the leaders of the country, we pray to you. President, he signed, Sheikh Mamad Bin Saith, we pray to you. Prime Minister, he signed, Sheikh Mamad Bin Rashid, we pray to you. Sharja Rula Sheikh Al Kasmee, we pray to you. Hallelujah, hallelujah. Dear God, this day, we pray to God, we pray to God. Dear God, you have come to us, you have come to us. My beloved, you have come to this world of God. You have brought us together. Dear God, we pray to you, we pray to you. You have brought us together. We will pray to you. We all look at him. 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 He has left his children. He has left his children. He has left his children. We all look at him. We all look at him. Dear God. We ask you, our children, we pray to you. Will you pray to God, will you pray to God? Will you pray to God? Hallelujah, hallelujah, hallelujah. Dear God, dear God, we pray to you. Will you pray to God, we pray to you. Will you pray to God, we pray to you. We pray to you, we pray to you. We pray to you, we pray to you. We pray to you, we pray to you. Yes, Christ. We pray to you, we pray to you. Amen, amen. Hallelujah, hallelujah. This day, this day, we are coming to God, the assemblies of God, Sharja, the Tamil village of Sarbaga are coming. Hallelujah. He has come to us, he has come to us, he has come to us, he has come to us. God, God, Lord, God, God, you have saved our children, you have saved our children. Amen. He is in our lives. Hallelujah. God, God, why are you here? What happiness, we pray to him. We all, we pray to God.
God, God, why are you here? What happiness? Man, man, you have come to me. What joy? God, God, why are you here? What happiness? Man, man, you have come to me. What joy? Happiness, my heart, you have come. You are the Lord of the Lord. Happiness, my heart, you have come. You are the Lord of the Lord. Happiness, my heart, you have come. You are the Lord of the Lord. Happiness, my heart, you have come. You are the Lord of the Lord. Happiness, my heart, you have come. You are the Lord of the Lord. Happiness, my heart, you have come. You are the Lord of the Lord. 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 Happiness, my heart, you have come. You are the Lord of the Lord. Happiness, my heart, you have come. You are the Lord of the Lord.
Hallelujah, hallelujah. God saved us, we are coming to God, amen. Hallelujah. I saw a flashback. He has done the good things. We can say, we can say, we can say, amen. Our children, they are lost in the sand. But, we have prayed to him. We pray to him, dear God, hallelujah, hallelujah. You have done the good things. I will give you your blessings. I will sing your songs. You have come to us, dear God, you have come to us, you have come to us. We all.
You have come to us. 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 You have done the good things. You have come to us. You have done the good things. You have come to us. You have done the good things. You have done the good things. You have come to us. 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 You have done the good things. You have come to us. You have done the good things. You have done the good things. You have done the good things. You are the Lord of the Lord. 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 You have come to us. 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 You have come to us.
Hallelujah, hallelujah. Amen, hallelujah. I will sing your songs. Hallelujah. Dear God, you are a good one, amen. You have been there for a long time, you have been there for a long time. Tell us, all the good things you have done, dear God. Good. He is a good one. Amen. Great. He is great. He is great. He is great. Hallelujah, hallelujah. He has done the good things. He has done the good things. He is great. He is great. He is a big head. He is a big head. He is a big head. Hallelujah. Your sons, your sons, you pray to them, we pray to them.
Your sons, your sons, you pray to them, we pray to them. Your sons, your sons, you pray to them, we pray to them. You are the king of the Lord. 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 She is a queen. She is a queen. She is a queen. She is a queen. She is great. 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 Your sons, your sons, you pray to them, we pray to them. Your sons, your sons, you pray to them, we pray to them. You are the king of the Lord. 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 She is beautiful. 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 Your sons, your sons, you pray to them, we pray to them. Your sons, your sons, you pray to them, we pray to them. You are the king of the Lord. 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 She is beautiful. She is beautiful. She is beautiful. She is beautiful. She is a big head. 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 Your sons, your sons, you pray to them, we pray to them. Your sons, your sons, you pray to them, we pray to them. You are the king of the Lord. You are the king of the Lord. You are the king of the Lord. You are the king of the Lord.
Hallelujah, hallelujah. He is great. He is great. He is a big head. Generation to generation. He is a big head. Tell us, dear God. We pray to you, dear God. One day, in the shade of the forest, we will go. In the shade of the forest, we will go. In the shade of the forest, we will go. We will say, dear God, we pray to God, we pray to God. We pray to God, we pray to God. We will see, we will see, we will see, we will see. In our holy days, we will pray to God, we will pray to God. We will pray to God, we will pray to God. Hallelujah, hallelujah. God, born, we pray to God, we pray to God. We will sing, we will sing, we will sing, we will sing.
The Lord is in your hands. 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 The Lord is great. The Lord is great. The Lord is great. The Lord is great. The Lord is in your hands. 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 The Lord is in your hands.
Hallelujah, hallelujah. We all, in our homes, we pray to God. He saved us. He has created and operated us. He has brought us together. Hallelujah, only look at him. We are in the wilderness. 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 Whatever state you are in, dear God, whatever state you are in, we will do what we can. We will do what we can, dear God. We will do what we can. Our lives will end. Our lives will end. Our souls will be destroyed. We will be blessed, dear God. We will be blessed. We will be blessed. We came to ask you. We will be blessed. We will be blessed. We will be blessed. We pray to God. We pray to God.
We pray to God. We pray to God. We pray to God. We pray to God. My life will end. My life will end. My soul will be destroyed. We pray to God. My life will end. My life will end. My soul will be destroyed. We pray to God. We pray to God. The Lord is great. 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 Eksum neyarakkaa bhi. Kainthu nee naga akkumaythu. Birehakaadhiyakkaa bhi. Ennaatkal mudiyumbare. Enjeevan piriyumbare. Enswasam odiyumbare. Unmay aaradhippe. Unmay aaradhippe. Ennaatkal mudiyumbare. Enjeevan piriyumbare. Enswasam odiyumbare. Unmay aaradhippe. Unmay aaradhippe. Istanay muray dari naalu. Akkumayum manthi bhi. Nanna yiduvaayipadaasir. Uddikum nara bhi. Istanay muray dari naalu. Akkumayum manthi bhi. Nanna yiduvaayipadaasir. Uddikum nara bhi. Ennaatkal mudiyumbare. Enjeevan piriyumbare. Enswasam odiyumbare. Unmay aaradhippe. Unmay aaradhippe. Ennaatkal mudiyumbare. Enjeevan piriyumbare. Enswasam odiyumbare. Unmay aaradhippe. Unmay aaradhippe.
Vanan bhoomi olindhu ponaalum. Um vaartay endrum maharadu. Iu vaalkai, indha vilagavaalkai alindhu marayindhu po. Visu vasii, endendrum, endendrum, endendrum. Nilay nirpan hallelujah. Illa manidarkthum aanavati. Illa aasir vaadathin utti. Engal idhayaththi indha kaalay velayile. Mida namgal padakkuro. Enge hero, maasir parave ennusollii. Paadi deva samudathle namayarkpadi. Indhaa aanavav. Vanan bhoomi.
Unthukki murayindhu ponaalum. Um vaattaygalindhu aarabhi. Iu vaalkai arindhu aarindhu po. Visu vasii, endendam nilaypa. Vanan bhoomi olindhu ponaalum. Um vaattaygalindhu aarabhi. Iu vaalkai arindhu aarindhu po. Visu vasii, endendam nilaypa. Aaah, aah, aah. Yes, hallelujah. Ah, ah, ah. 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 Illa vaadhiyeshu aanavavini. Illa aasir vaadathin utti. Ila idhayaththi unniyada parayin thiro. Endru hinlo, um maasir parave. Illa unidarkthu aanavavini. Illa aasir vaadathin utti. Ila idhayaththi unniyada parayin thiro. Endru hinlo, um maasir parave.
Indhaa aanavav.
Ah, ah, ah. Ah, ah, ah. Ah, ah, ah. Ah, ah, ah. Hallelujah.
Yes, Jesus. Prive, prive. Valuvada padinengalai kaakkavum. Magimayulla sanidhanathle, migundha magichiodi. Engalai maasattavargalumai, nirutha vallamayaru. Engalai taalthi arpanikrom. Sabayai ulundhu namaskarikrom. Dodandhu indha kaalay velayile engalodanir pesom. Namde divya vaartegal engaloodaya vaalkaila oru maatthathai kondu varattum. Pessukira maganay maraththukaththir vellipadu. Ummedayan naamam mattum magimikka. Yes, Christ engra. Eedayenayattu oppathanamathil jepikrom. Jeevanulla nalla pidavai. Amen. Daesaidhi ellaram ammarumbadiya kettikrom. Meendu morumuray, the retreatruthu vandurukkaro. Ovaruvarayum vaalthi varaveerukkaro. Nammathile vandurukkara evangelist Freddie Joseph averigalayum naangal. Varaveerukkaro. Avargal nammathile eruppadu migundha sandosham. Deva vaartegalai nammathile vargal. Karangalathatti, namdeva vullyayai.
Anvandavir, indha kaalay velayikaagumai naangal stotthrikrom. Umde prasnam engalmathile asewadi kondurukkara badi naal thudikrom. Indho oru slakkyam nirengalikthandadukaaga. Nadaesathai todandhu aasravathithu vandupadukaaga. Matthorulkaa aasravadhumaga nadasaththi vaitturukkare. Ingay oru jana kutthathai varavaitthu. Anegar ingu vandhu, ummay sondaracharaaga, arindugolla kudiya kirubay koduthurukkare. Todandhinda sabayin mulamaga, anegavaaalkai thottukondurukkare. Adharkaagumai naangal stotthrikrom. Pagalvelayile engalodidai padunga. Umde vasanam teeliudan adigarathudan abhishekathudan vandhu, engamathila arpoddu kiriisaitum. Yes, unmulapidavai. Amen. Konja gain kamibandu. Karturipasuthu namathukstotram. Andru kodutha indha slakkyathur kagaana andore stotthrikren. It's a happy moment for me to be here. Original plan pragarmaaga. Illa, I was coming for the CSI church. I want to thank also the CSI church for accommodating this meeting. Pastor Kenudaya, nanri, teriyathukolgu. Always a joy to come and share God's word. Ungalmathile epurudum. Mudhaldarvar 2008th aandha naan vandurunde. Appothalirundu almost for fifteen years whenever I've come. This church has always been very loving and encouraging in God's work. Padhanindha aandugalantrusolumorudhu, adho oru milekalgaleppola. Enode odiyaththulum oru prayanamayirukkarda. Uggasabegalidum prayanamayirukkarda. Todandhukaththana may vaynadathikondu varugarar. Amen.
Neeladhanaalillam naalaguma. Neeladhanavallem varvaguma. Neeladhanaalillam naalaguma. Neeladhanavallem varvaguma. Uyirin uthre niyavai. Unmayin variyae niyavai. Uyirin uthre niyavai. Unmayin variyae niyavai. Urvin pirappae niyavai. Ullathin maluve niyavai. Neeladhanaalillam naalaguma. Neeladhanavallem varvaguma. Neeladhanaalillam naalaguma. Neeladhanavallem varvaguma. Enadhu aatrannum niyavai. Enadhu valimayum niyavai. Enadhu aatrannum niyavai. Enadhu valimayum niyavai. Enadhu aranum niyavai. Enadhu konthayum niyavai. Neeladhanaalillam naalaguma. Neeladhanavallem varvaguma. Neeladhanaalillam naalaguma. Neeladhanavallem varvaguma. Enadhu ninayvum niyavai. Enadhu moriyum niyavai. Enadhu ninayvum niyavai. Enadhu moriyum niyavai. Enadhu mitpum niyavai. Enadhu uyimpum niyavai. Neeladhanaalillam naalaguma. Neeladhanavallem varvaguma. Neeladhanaalillam naalaguma.
Amen. Karturipasuthu namathukstotram. The kaalay velayile, my time is ten fifty-three. I'm starting. Konja gain kamibandunga. Allamla, rubber blanket pandunga. I'll use that, yes. Check. Oru renra aandugal kadithu, velila travel pannivarakoodiya first prayanam, India wood. Uvayidha vandurukkara. So, don't ask, international trip has started. Thank God. Nariyakarangalindha lockdown samayathle, seeshathuthai kuruthu karangalaisail paduthurukagaandharu thuvisaidha. Pulambal, rendavad adhigaram, padinalavad vasanam. Indha konja gain kamibandukla. Pulambal, rendavad adhigaram, padinalavad vasanam. Vasiya. Uggalonaaruga.
Unthirkadrisigal, abathamum, vyarthamumana darisananagali unakkaaga darisithaarhey. Um. Avargal un sirayruppay vilakkumbadi, un akramaththai eduthukkaataamal, abathamanaavigalayum, kedaanavigalayum unakkaaga darisithaarhey.
Um.
Valipokkariyavaru unpailil kaykottukarare.
Um.
Ersalem kumaraththiyan pailil eesathpottu, tangal talahalay thulukki, poorana vadivum, sarva bhoomiin magilchimana nagaram, idhodana engirare.
Sari. Enakku sila aandugalaagirukkoodiya karusana enavindra hal? Vasanaththai teelivaga pressinkikka vandum, aanavurudhe vasanaththil thanudiyeh, heroeskala epurudum, nigaypaduthi, avarudiyeh, negativay vandhu vasanme epurudeme mariththa dal. Daavidapathina lalathoorko, ketthadhoorko, adharanamakkattukolakoodiya paadangal adigam. Anal, pressangangalile adigamaga indhrukadisi naatkalya kettukoodiya, oru motivationalaaga postuvana karangal matramay kettikrom. Anal, adhuvandhu canceru kaaf syrup kodukramadri. Medicine sweetaarukko, ana cancer, salvagad. So, karturidhe vasanam unmayagaya ulukkul vaalaysaidhaldan. Adha nammude vaalkile uduvadale, taramudibandhade, aaramaga naan nambikravan, oru pressinger aaragaga sonnar. Oru rowdi vandhu kattiyavetchu oruthana kutthuthukko. Oru surgeon, bypass open heart surgery panduthukko, baththiina, surgeon border code perushaarukko. Rowdi soruurudhu chinnatha tharukko. Anal, idhu, ugal vaalkiyay meetkakoodiya vettu. Idhu ugal vaalkiyay arikakoodiya vettu. Adai purindukolavu. So, we need to always allow God to speak to us. Easy to read Tamil biblerukkada, enode, Tamilkukko konjathu ottnamarukko, adhala vasikran. Unadhatthirkadrisigal, unakkaaga darisannam kandargal, anal, avargal darisannangal ellam payanathravaygal aina. Avargal unadhapavangalukke edhuraga pesavillai. Avargal karangalai sari panna moyarchisayavillai. Avargal karayaththai sari panna moyarchisayavillai. Avargal unakkusaydigalai pressinkithinar, anal, avay unney, yamaatrum saydigal. Beautiful translation. Avay unney sari sayavillai, avayal unney, yamaatrum saydigal. Inriki, saydiki kodutha talayp. First, I think, fasting prayer, you see, ubavasama. Ubavasamum, jabummum, edharkin, naan, pastorita message annipu utta. My pastor sonnar, inikyaani, celebration day, mooditchelaarka naangal biriyani koduthu, anuppa poranai, siripvandrichi. Sari pastor, uppu biriyaniyum katthrikaavum edhukkun vechiklan topic apdint. Then I gave this topic. Asravadama, angigarama. Vasingal nodus serundu, ennaagumam, irothavad adhigaram. Eightthavad vasanam, irothavad vasanathal vas.
Kathar Mousayenokki, nee kola eduthukondu, neeyum un sagodarnaki aaronu, sabayarai kudivarasaidhu. Avargal kandgalukkum unney kanmalayipaththupesungal. Appudhu adhu thanerathilula thannierai kodukum. Ippe dini avargalukka kanmalayil undhu thannier purappadapanni, sabayarukkum, avargal mirhangalukkum kudikakodu poyenra. Appudhu Mousay, thanakka kathar katlayitappadiye, katharidhe sanidhiyil undha kola eduthaan. Mousayum aaronum sabayarai kanmalaykumunbaha kudivarasaidharhey. Appudhu Mousay avargalinoke, kalahakarade, khelungal, ungalukkindha kanmalayil undhu naangal thannier purappadapannuvomo ennusollii. Than kayay oongi, kanmalay, than koolinall irandharamadithaan, odanay thannier eeraalamai purappattadu, sabayar kudithaarhey, avargal mirhangalum kudithadu. Pinbuk kathar Mousayayum aaronayum nokki, isravil puttaridhin kandgalukkumunbaha, enay parishuttampadumbadi, neengal enay isw. neengal enay iswasiyamar pona padayinaal. Indha sabayarukkun naan kodutha desathukul, neegal avargalik kondupovadilai enra.
Nallagaavaniyaa, aandhar irothavada diharathila, enga pastoridhe pesikondurukkummo, indha karayathay pagundukonda. By the way, pastor Abraham Thomas sent his greetings to you as well. Soli irunna, Sunday varmo, naga varugirin. Irothavath vasikumorudhu, aandhar solrar, seven day thile, take your staff and go speak to the rock. Take your staff, speak to the rock. Kola eduthukundupo, kanmalay odhu, pes. Modaldarava kola use panni, kanmalay adin soltar. Ipoo, poi pesa than solrar. Yan kola eduthupo solrar? Kola eduthupo sonnadi yar? Aandharan solrar. Pesunapoi pesun solirukkanti dhan. Kola eduthu phosonadu kathartha. Anai enna solrar, kola eduthudipo, anah adikada, pes. Appri enra, aandhar, naan ovur karayum sayimorudhu, thulliyamaga avar enna solligararo. Adaidan sayavendum, pona darava soli successanathai, indha darava saye, aandhar solavilai. Ipoodhu naan enna solligirano, adai unni paga kettu, nee adai say. Koonil adikirarugal, anal thannier varugirudhu. Adhal katturukolakoodiya paadam enna, naa tapusin janaa, aandhar enay asurvadi par. Moral of the story. Appriya? Indha call evailela, nee thavuru sayidhalu, maandhar unney asurvadi par, no? Sila nairangaliile, nam sayinradha karayathay aandhar asurvadi padukkuk karanam, matra karanangal undu. Redu million makal thagathala kasta paditirukkara. Unudiy kiiipadainmae naala, naa redu million makala dandikamudiyadu. Appo, nee kiiipadayama sayira karayathirukku, asurvadam varuvathirukkuk karanam, naan janangal medu karusana ulavunaga rukkare. Appo, naan aandharudiyah asurvaththay vaitthian vaalkiyay varvada. Aandhar naan sayigirathay angikarikrara ilay andpadivathu varvada. God blessed what Moses did, but God did not approve what Moses did. Aandhar Moses sayidathay asurvadi thar, anal Moses sayidathay angikarikavilai. Appu ennoodya vaalkile, naan asurvaththay tedi povada, aandharudiyah angikaraththay tedi povada. Asurvaththuk pinala pona danger, yena, enga appa enakkaha sayidha jabumum, tyagumum, sila samayathila aandhar, kiruvayaga en vaalkileena seerar. Kadrar, appu naan kettukandhyak kailvi, aandhar ennoodya vaalkile naan varumorudhu. Neer enay angikarikirira, naan sayigirathay, angikarikirira endpaday parthu varavendum. Neer asurvadi kiriira endpaday parthu varu, mudiyadu, because blessing is not the measurement for God's approval always. Angila Bible la romba telivaaga, aandhar orulapathu solligarar. Deuteronomy is, Ubaagamum 32, 51. N L T Bible la idhu beautifula aruke, Tamilan adhu vasana light abdi varudhu. For both of you betrayed me with the Israelites at the waters of Meriba at Kadesh, in the wilderness of Zin, you failed to demonstrate my holiness to the people of Israel. En parisuttathan, neenapana la? Makaladathla demonstrate pannala. Appu nee kiiipadayamal ponnadu, ennadu, naangikarikada karayandha, anar ennoodya parisuttatham makal munala demonstrate pannama, poi ta. Appu naan sayakkoodiya karangalile sail padugalile, aandhar yepri edhurupparukkaraan na, un vaalkhin mulamaga, naan unakkiaaraga rukkare, endpaday makalukke, kahnbikavirukkare. Unudiyah vaalkay ennoodya parisuttathay matraorulukkavilangasayigirudhu, naa yamagangattarisaada sonna. Aandhar oru introduce pannam, yepri introduce pandrarana, I am the god of Abraham, Isaac and Jacob. Neen enna company levela sering sir, naa Microsoft levela seran. Enna company levela sering, naa Sony levela seran, nampa mugavari, oru companya vethu tha. Anal aandhar namulay yepri arimugapaduthuradha, mattam gettathu. I am a god of Freddie Joseph, I am a god of Sam, I am a god of Benny. So, appu yepri solrar na, un vaalkhin mulamadaampad, naan mattamukkuk arimugapaduthna, appu nee kristavanendru solumorudhu, kristva udayanendru solumorudhu, unudiyah vaalkay ennoodya parisuttathay avargalukke, kahnbikathu. Is your life a demonstration of my holiness? Unudiyah asurvaththay matram parkamal, un vaalkilunudhi angikaram rukkarda endpaday, parkavendu. That is the life God desires. Vasigal, meega yerdhyabustagam, irothavada diharum, padinalavath vasunam, naa addichidu pooparan, time illa, naa usuala adigaprasing, neenak time pathadu. Irunana, I will rush, take those notes, you can go home and study it. Meega irothavada diharum, padinalavath vasunam.
Nee ettu desathil undhu purappattanali.
Nee egupthu desathil undhu purappattanali le.
Nadandhadu polave.
Nadandhadu polave.
Unay adhisayangalay kana pannuve.
Unay adhisayangalay kana pannuvain. Telivaaga unay adhisayangalay kana pannuvain mattar aandhar solirukla. Namak calendar la la indha vasanam botan, egupthu pathi ponnamattu. Unay adhisayangalay, adhanapisoldupayiruklaame, yedukyegupthu contexta meega bustagala thigidwarunu. Appri na, egupthu edhukontextla edhavun, solrar, unay adhisayangalay kana pannuvain, solidupayilla. Nee egupthulandhu purappattanali le, un sayidathu polave na, appu Egyptian kontextla edhavunre kondu varugirar. Egyptian kontextla aandhar enna sayidhar endpaday parkumporudhu tha. Andha adhisayangalay ennoodya vaalkile kana saywar, edharkaga sayidhar, yepri sayidhar, adhanudhi result enna endpaday, thodandhu vasigapogirum. Yatraagum padralavada diharum, rendavath vasunam.
Naan ehithileenadapithathayum, naan avargalukkul sayidha enna adayalangalayum, nee un pillagalin sevigal ketkavum, un pillagurudhe pillagalin sevigal ketkavum, vivarithu solumbadikum. Naane kathar endpaday neengal ariyumbadikum, naan avan irdayathayum, avan uyya karanayin irdayathayum kadinappaduthinene enra. Appriyay mousayum aaronum parvunidathil vandhu, unay thaaltha, nee edhuvarekki manadilladurupai.
Sari, yatraagum onbadhu, padinaru.
Ennoodya wallamayay unadathil kahnbikumbadiyahavum, en naamum bhoomiilankum prastabumahavum badiyahavum, unailinil, nilainiruthinene. Nee enjanangalay pohevadamil, innum avargalukkuvirodomai, unay uyartukharaaya.
Rendu karayam, aandhar solrar, parvunay vethu, for this purpose I have let you live, that I might show you my power, and that my name may be declared through the earths. Unay edharkaga vetchirukkandhiri ma, un mulamaga, ennoodya wallamayay, ulagilirpavukal ellarudhu, kattuvathar kaga, naan ena pandra, unna vetchirukka. Rendavathu, aurudhi janangalaththu pathu solrar, yatraagum padthurandila, that you may recognize and know that I am the Lord. Nee, naane unudiyah kathar endpaday, unarumbadi, appo janangala pathu solrar, unudiyah kathar naan endpaday, nee purindukolono. Unakkun naan devan endpaday, purindukolono, adhanala, naan indha adhisayangalala sayaporan. Yedriyayandham vetchirukran, avan mulamaga, naan yaar endpaday, ulagathuk kattaporan. Appo, indha oru egupthulandhu purappattakarangal sayimorudhu, adhukre rendu nokko. Enjanangal naan yaar endpaday terindukolavendum, even mulamaga, naan yaar endpadu, ulagathum terindukolavendum. Oru karayaththay vethu, enjanangalukkum velipadathara poran, naan yaar endpadu, ulagathirukka, kattaporan. Appu naan sayapoginradha karangalile, moondrakarayam telivaaga kattapogirin, ennoodya wallamayay kahnbikapogirin. I am going to demonstrate my power. Rendavathu, ennoodya padukappay, naan demonstrate pandaporan. I am going to demonstrate my protection. Moondravathu, ennoodya thittaththay velipaduthavirubegiren, ennoodya planay unakkay kattavirubegiren. Appu thidh egupthulandhu purappattanali le, adhisayangalay kana pannadhu edhukaga, enjanangal naan yaar endpaday, arindukolavendum. That I am a god of power who can protect them, who has a plan for them. Naan wallamayin devan, avargalay padukakkara devan, avargalukkaagavu thittaththay vethirukka devan. Adhe samayathila, indha parvunavetchi, naan yaar endpaday, ulagathirukku, kahnbikavirumbegiren. Idhu telivaaga nadakkarathay nam parkaram, yoswar rendavada diharum, onbadavath vasunam.
Kathar ungalukke desaththay oppukooduthaarendru, ungalay patthi engalukkuthi hilpidithirukkaraendru. Ungalay kuruthu desaththukudigal ellarum, sorunduponargalendru, arivain. Ningal ehithilundhu purappattapodu, kathar ungalukkum unbaagak sivantha samutratthin thannieray vatri pogapanninathayum, neengal yordhannakka aparatthil sangarampaninay, emoriyariinay, rendu rajaakalagiya, sihunukkum, ohukkum sayidathayum keldvipattom. Keldvipattapodu, engal irdayam karayindupoyitru, ungalalay, ellarudhey daiyrimum attrupoyitru. Ungal devanahi kathare, uyera vannathilum, kiile bhoomiyelum devananaver. Ipoodum, naan ungalukkudaiyavus saydappadayinaal, neengalum, en tagappan kudumbathukkudaiyavus sayvom, endru kathar peril enak aanayittu, neengal en tagappanayum, en thaayayum, en sagodharayum, en sagodharigalayum, avargalukkum danae.
Aandhar veli nadathradha pathu, ivungavandhi erigopogumporudhu, indha information varudhu. Ungal aandhar enna sayidhar endpaday, naangal kettukomorudhu, enguridhi irdayam urukiyedhendukarargal. Appu thidh parvun mulamaga, avar yaar endpaday, ulagathirukkuk kattasambikaran, sundu sonnadu, ipan enna educhu? Velile ellarukkum teriyavandrisu, aandhar enna sayidhrukkaraendru. So, God is consistent with what he wants to do. Ipoodhu thanudhi janangalukka, avarudhi wallamay, avarudhi thittam, avarudhi padukappay demonstrate pandrutukkavara, ena pandaporan na. Endha desathila avargal kudiyirukkaraargalo, andha desathila, wallamayana egupthiyargalirukkaraargal, avargalukkum, aandhar tamudiyah janathirukkum, vityasangalay kattapogirar. Adhe sunalay sandhika pogirargal, anal andha sunalayla, vityasaththay kahnbikapogirar. Yatraagum padinalavath vasunam, irothavath vasunam.
Analum kathar eyipthiyarukum, israeliarukum pandukravitthiasaththay, neengal ariyumbadikku. Israeli puttarar anayvarukkulu.
Thirivasiya?
Analum kathar egipthiyarukum, israeliarukum pandukravitthiasaththay.
Egupthiyarukum, israeliarukum pannigendra?
Vitthiasaththay.
Vitthiasaththay.
Neengal ariyumbadikku.
Neengal ariyumbadikku.
Israeli puttarar anayvarukkulu, manidhar mudal, mirugajeevangal varakkyum, oru naayo hilum than naavay asipadilai.
Ipana solrar, yenjanako, matra ungalirukko, naan enna kana poran? Vitthiasaththay kattapogiran. Appu aandhar inru, namak, aavikuray israel janangala agurukkumorudhu, thodandhu kahnbikavirumbegirudhu enna na. Appa egupthulandhu purappattamorudhu, avugal enna kamsa, ennoodya wallamayay kahnbitcha, yam padukappa kamsa, yen thittaththay kahnbitha. Appu thidh neen indhatthala varumporudhu, un vaalkhin mulamaga, naan devan endpaday, unakkuk kattavirumbegiren. Un mulamaga, matraavargalukkun naan yaar endpadayum, kattavirumbegiren. Appri pannumorudhu, unakkum, matraavargalukkumirukkakoodiya vitthiasaththay, telivaaga, naan kattuvan. Yatraagum irothavada diharum, padinalavath vasunam.
Mandrabadihurum, tangal mandra vittayinaal, paingalay pirapikubadi, ayatanan sayidharhey. Sayidhum avargalal kuudamarpoyitru, paingal, manidhar meelum, mirugajeevangal meelubirundhu. Appalu the mandrabadihgal parvunayenoki, idhu devanudhay viral enrarhey. Analum kathar soliirundhapadi, parvunudhi irdayam kadinappattathu, avargalukkusavi gudamarpo naan. Appalu the kathar mousayayenoki, naalay adihaalamayni elundupoi, parvunadhi kippurappattu varumbodu, avanukkum unbaagak ninru, enak aaradhanis sayumbedi, enjanangalay pohevadu. Enjanangalay pohevadayahil, naan un meelum, un uyya karrar meelum, un janangal meelum, un veedugal meelum, palavida vandugalayana puvay. Ehithyer veedugalum, avargalirukkadaesam, andha vandugalal nirayum, bhoomiin naduvil naane, kathar endpaday, nee ariyumbadi. Enjanangalirukkara kossein naatilla naali le, vandugal varadapadikku.
Ennadu? Anga matra vandu, varadu, yena first enna soltar, yen janangalukko, mattamukkuk, enna thakana poran? Vitthiasaththay kattaporan, thodandhu vasig.
Varadapadikyantha naattay viseshappaduthi, enjanangalukkum, unjanangalukkum, vityasam undahumbadi sayvay.
Amen. Sari, appurinduchu, yatraagum onbadavada diharum, moondravath vasunam.
Kathuridhe karam, vedilirukkara un mirugajeevangalahi, kudarayalin meelum, kaladhahayalin meelum, otthahangalin meelum, adumadugalin meelum irukkum. Mahakoodithanak kollainoy undahum, kathar israeliarin mirugajeevangalukkum, egipthiyarin mirugajeevangalukkum vitthiasampaduwa. Israeli puttararukkuviriyavigal ellabathilum, ontrum saavadilai enra.
First enna sonnar, unakkum, avunakkum vitthiasaththakattara. Ipoo, unakkun undhannavigalukkum, avunakkun undhannavigalukkum vitthiasaththakattara. Annikirunda adumadugal than, avurulay ennadu, swathu. Appu modalavathu, I am showing a difference between you and them. Now I am showing a difference between your possession and their possession. Unakkun undhannavigalak enna agupodu, avunakkun undhannavigalak, enna agupodu, neenak thodandhu vasigina, inder, with difference akamthukondae irupparu. Yatraagum onbadavada diharum, padinalavath vasunam vasig. Yatraagum onbadavada diharum, irothandhi irothavath vasig. Indha karangalay neengal parthukondae irupirgal, yatraagum padthavada diharum, irothrendavath vasunam vasig.
Mousaythan kayay vannathirukkaneeraganniti na, appalu the ehithu desaminkum, moondrunaal mattum kariyurul undaayitr. Moondrunaal mattum oruvaray oruvar kanaavum illai, oruvarum tamidaththay vittu elundirukkavum illai. Israeli puttarar yaavurukkumovennil, avargal vasassthalangalile velichchamirundhu. Appalu the parvun mousayadappithu, neengal poi kathirkaradhanis sayungal, ungal adugalum, ungal madugalum, mathram niruthappadavendum. Ulkulandaygal ungaludhan, pogala amen dra.
Velichchathalayum vitthiasaththak, sup, enna lam bagaroh, aandhar sol, nee egupthulandhu purappattanali le, unay adhisayangalay kana sayidathu pola. Sevin, appu Egyptian kontextla enna na, enjanangalukkun naan yaar endpaday, velipaduthavendum. Avargal mulamaga, ulagathirukkun naan yaar endpaday, velipaduthavendum. My power, my protection, my plan, un mulamaga, naan yaar endpadu, ennoodya janangalukkum, matraavargalukkum, vitthiasaththay kahnbikavirumbegiren. Ennoodya wallamayin mulamaga, ennoodya adhisayangal mulamaga, enjanangalukkun undhannavigalayum, matraavargalukkum vitthiasaththakattara. Appu indha passage vasikumorudhu, naan yepri jebikavendu, aandhar, idha avargalukkni sayidathu pola, ennoodya vaalkilum, neer yaar endpaday, kattunga pa. Neer, en vaalkaykay, oru thittaththavethirukkari endpaday, kattunga swami, en vaalkilum, unudhi wallamayay, naan anupavikumbadu, enak sayinge. En vaalkile padukapparukkadanndru say, that is how you pray when you hear a message. Idhu ennoodya vaalkile, nirayverumbadi karangalay sayinge aandhar, vitthiasaththay matraavargal kahnumbadi. Na chinabasangli, epoduncho, man solu, aandhar, avargal vaalkilum, unudhi karamiruppaday, matraavargal kahnattu. Daniel was special. Endha raja vandhalo, andha rajaakal nallathiridhu, this fellow is not ordinary. Orarasaangal kalancha enna panduvaanga, andha pariyat teama fullava, thuiiduvaanga. Oru company la, oru team kalancha, full teama, thuiiduvaanga, teama mariitthiru, all adhevadaarga. Because they realize this fellow is different, he is special. Appu thidh oru navaraagirukran, shadraakmesakapadunak, onga moondu pairtha. But aandhar telivaaga, enna pandrar, matraavargalukkum, urugalukkumirukkakoodiya vitthiasaththay kahnbikaran. Appu indha desathilum, aandhar, enay kahngravan, neer enoode irukkari endpaday, kana sayit. Amen, amen, that is the reality of God. Appri irukkumorudhu, yuva unayaram, poduvaage. Naan devan, naan yaar endpaday, unakkay kattuvan, en wallamay thittaththay, padukappay, kattuvan, vitthiasaththakattuvan, unakkun undhudukko, mattan undhudukko, kattuvan sonnavar. Modaldaraviaga, yatraagum panandavada diharum varukiru. Ipoo, oru conditionavetchu, naan idhu sayaporan, nee idhu senjina, idhu nada konsoolrar. First vaatti, yuva naravandhu blank check. Ipoodha enna pandrar, account pay rendu koodu, porrar. Yatraagum panandavada diharum, moondravath vasunam.
Kathar ehithu desathil, mousayayem aaronayum nokki, indha maadam ungalukkupradhanam maadam, idhu ungalukkuvarshathin modalam maadamai iruppada. Ningal israeli sabayariyavariyum nokki, indha maadam padtham teediil, veetutthalayvarakal, veetukku oru aattukuttiyake. Ogoruvarum, ogoru aattukuttiyay terinduhulakkadavargal, oru veettilirukkara vargal, oru aattukuttiyay pusikkathirukku, podumana peyrgala iramarpona. Avanum, avan samibathilirukkara, avunudhi ayalveetukaranum, tangalathilula athumakalin lakthirukkakada, oru aattukuttiyay terinduhulla vendum.
Aravath vasunam.
Adai, indha maadam padinalam teedi varakkyum vaitthirundhu, israeli sabayin ogoru kootatharum, sayangalathil adithu, adhinrathathil konjam eduthu, tangal adai pusikkum, veetu, vassal, nilaikalkalirandilum, nilayin meersattathilum theliathu, andhar raathriile, adhinmamsaththay neruppinaal suttu.
Panandavath vasunam.
Andhar raathriile, naan ehithu desaminkum kadandupoi, ehithu desathilula, manidhar mudal, mirugajeevangal mattum, mudarpeera irukkavigal ellam adambadni, ehithu devargalin meel, needyay seluthuvay, naane kathar. Ningalirukkum veedugalil, andharatham ungalukkaag, adayalamai irukkum, andharathaththay naan kandu, ungalay kadandupovay. Naan ehithu desaththay alikkumbo, alikkum vaathay, ungalukkule varadurukkum, andhanal, ungalukkun naingu gurdalana naalai irukkakadavadu. Adai katharukku pandigayaga asaripirgalage.
Enna solrar? Yatraagum panandra, first vasunam solrar. This month is to be for you, the first month, the first month. Tell the whole community of Israel that on the tenth day of this month, each man is to take a. Tell the whole community of Israel that on the 10th day of this month, each man is to take a lamb. 10வத நாள் அவங்க என்ன பண்ணனு? ஒரு ஆட்டைத் தெரிந்து குள்ளவேண்டும். அந்த ஆட்டை 14வத நாள் வரைக்கும் பாத்துட்டு, 14வத நாள் தேதி ராத்திரி அதை வெட்டி, அதுடைய ரத்தத்தைக் கதுவுகளிலே பூச வேண்டும். அப்போ 14வத நாள் நம்மை என்ன கொண்டாட்டுறோ? பஸ்காப் பண்டிகையைக் கொண்டாட்டுறோ. சரியா? ஜீசஸ் இருக்கும் மொழிது பஸ்கா நாள் என்னிக்கு, லாஸ் சப்பர் வந்து என்னிக்கு நடந்துச்சு? ராபோச்சனை எப்போ நடந்துச்சு? வேறு கண்ம. வேறு கண்ம ரத்திலே நான் கெச்சமை நேலக்காட்டி குடுக்கப்பட்டார். அப்பத்தைப் பிட்டு எப்போ நடக்குது? Passover meal. அப்ப அது வந்து 14வது நாள். அப்போ 10வத நாள் என்னிக்கு? குருத்தோலை நாய்ர என்னிக்கு, தேவாட்டுகுட்டி. வராரு இருசிலைம்குள்ள. ஆனால் அவர்கள் தேவாட்டுகுட்டி தெரிந்து குள்ளவில்லை. வேறு ஒரு ஆட்டுகுட்டியைத் தெரிந்து கொண்டார்கள். ஆண்டு என்ன சொல்றாரு? அந்த ஆட்டுகுட்டியின் ரத்தத்தை உன்னுடைய கதவுகளிலே நான் பாத்தனா? ஏற்கனவே இந்த வீட்டிற்கு ஞாயன்தீர்ப்பு வந்தாயிற்று. அதனால் நான் அதைக் கடந்து போவேன். இதைச் செய்தீர்கள் என்றால், என் ஞாயன்தீர்ப்பு உங்கள் மீது வராமல், அது கடந்து போகும். நீ உயிரோடு இருப்பை பிக்காஸ் ஸம்படி எல்ஸ் சம்திங்க எல்ஸ் ஹஸ் டைட் ஓன் பிஹாப் ஓவ் யூ. உன்னிடத்தில் ஒரு மரணம், ஒரு சாபம் எடுக்கொள்ள பட்டாயிற்று. அப்படி ஒரு வீட்டில் ராபோச்சனை மண்று, பஸ்காப் பண்டிகை எண்டு. ரத்தம் பூசப்பட்ட வீட்டிற்குள் ஒரு எகுப்தியன் இருந்தால், பாதுகாகப்பட்டுருப்பானா? அப்படி அந்த வீட்டிற்குள் ஒரு எப்பிரேயின் இல்லாமல் இருந்ததா செத்துருப்பானா? இவளோ நார்ப்போதா நடந்தது எதுனாலே? நீ என் ஜனா நால். ஆனால் முதல் தரவியென்ன சொல்றாரு? The blood is going to make a difference between what happens in your life. ரத்தம் என்ன பண்ணப்போது? வித்தியாசத்தைக் காட்டப்போகுது. உன் மீது சாபங்கள் இருக்கலாம், உன் மீது பிள்ளிசுணியங்கள் இருக்கலாம். ஆனால் எது உன்னைப் பாதுகாக்கப்போகிறது என்றால், உன்னுடைய பேர் கிருஸ்தவ வாழ்க்கையல்ல. ரத்தத்திற்குள் யாராகிருந்தாலும், அவனுக்குப் பாதுகாப்பு உண்டு, விடுதலை உண்டு. ஆனால் ரத்தத்திற்குள் ஏலனமாக நினைச்சு, நம்ப எப்பிரேயான்னான? எப்படியாச்சு நம்முக்குப் பாதுகாப்பு உண்டுன்னு வெல்லசுத்திட்டின்னா காலி. For the first time he is bringing that. அப்போ நான் யாராகிருந்தாலும், நான் ரத்தத்திற்குள் இருந்தால், என்னுடைய பாவங்கள் மண்ணிக்கப்பட்டாயிற்று. நான் ரத்தத்திற்குள் இருந்தால், என் சாபங்கள் எடுத்துக்குள்ளப்பட்டாயிற்று. என்ன ரத்தத்திற்குள் இருந்தால், எனக்கு விருதமாக எந்த ஐதுமும் வந்தாலும் என்ன பண்ணனு? God has already dealt with. பக்கத்திலிருக்கறவர்கள் பாத்துகேளுங்க, ரத்தத்திற்குள் இருக்கிறீங்களா? It is very important. பிசாஸ் பைப்படுத்து என்ன தெரியுமா? ஆட்டுகுடிய ரத்தத்தைப் பாதுதா? இதைப் புரிந்துகொள்ளுங்க. The blood of Jesus is so powerful. அதனால்தான் ஸ்பெசிவிங்க சொல்றாரு. ரத்தத்தைப் பார்க்கும் மொழிது நான் உன்னைக் கடந்து போவேன். அப்போ இது ரத்தத்திற்குள் ஒரு எகுப்தியன் இருந்தாலும், அவனுக்குப் பாதுகாப்பு உண்டு. ரத்தத்திற்கு வெளியாக எப்பிரேயன் இருந்தாலும், அவனுக்குப் பாதுகாப்பு இல்ல. இவளோ நாரோ கண்டிஷன் கொண்டுவரல. இப்போ கண்டிஷன் கொண்டு வருகிறார்.
You see God's wisdom. You can't give anything to him. He has saved you. Who has given you money? He said, "I will always give you the right of permission." "Provision is given." "They gave them to us." "When they come to us, we will ask them." "God, who is faithful, came to us in a short time." Amen. We will go to the temple. There we will see everything. Then, what does God do to me? He wants to make me wrong. Amen. The next thing that God is doing is a path that you cannot see in your eyes. A path that is not suitable for you. If you read the book, it says, "The Lord of the 14th century, the 1st century, and the 31st century." They are going, and there is a tree. There is no possible pathway. There is no path that you can see. Even if you look at the exit route, there is none. There is a tree. There is no path that is suitable for you. But when God comes to your life, he will give you all the paths that you cannot see. He will give you paths that are not suitable for you. Amen. Amen. Then, I said, "How should we pray?" "Lord, you have done the deeds of the people who left the country." "In my life, you are a merciful one." "You are the God who protects me." "You are the God who treats my needs." "You are the God who gives me blessings." "You are who you are, and you are seeing my differences." "You see my differences with others." 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 "That is all." "You are the God who gives me blessings." "All the blessings that have come to me in the past years, your door of provision is opened." "In my life, there is no path that is suitable for you." "There is no way that you can come here." "There is no path that you can come here." "Then you will give me the blessings." "I will be anywhere, and I will see you." That is how you make your prayer. After this happened, God gave them to the Lord of the Land. When the Lord of the Land came to them, why 40 years? There was a road that was built for two weeks. He went to the country of the 31st century. Why did he take 40 years? In 14th century, 34th century.
You have visited the country for 40 days. Every day, every year, you have spent 40 years on your land. You have come to the village of the village.
Understand? In 13th century, I went to the country where I could not see anything. 12 people went. 40 days. 10 people came and said, "This is not suitable for us." "He has saved us, even Moses and Calypso." "As soon as he said that, the people were disturbed." "As soon as he disturbed, God said, "You have gone for one day, and that is 40 years." How long is 40 years? "If you do not hear what he is saying, "you do not believe him." You will know 40 years. This is what I am saying. "The blessings of God are given." "It is necessary for me to understand you." "Uparamam, 8th century."
You pray.
Uparamam.
You pray and preach, "You have given the people of God..." "You have preached everything you have heard." "You have preached everything you have heard."
"You have preached everything you have heard."
"Do you think you can hold your hands or not?"
"You have preached everything you have heard."
"You know what is in your heart." "You have remembered all the ways that you have taken in the past 40 years."
40 years, I am not. 40 years, you are. But what am I using 40 years for? Do you know what I am saying? To test me, I am using 40 years. They do not see it, and there is no provision. They have seen Megastambat. They have seen all the things. But even in one country, when the Lord of the Land is 60 years old, "Oh, God, we are afraid of you." "You are a great man." "We will do a service of worship." "I will go to the church and pray." Do you know what God has given you? 95th century, 1st century.
40 years. He has blessed us.
40 years?
He has blessed us.
I have blessed him.
He has blessed us.
He has blessed us.
They have seen the suffering of the people.
They have seen the suffering of the people.
They know my ways.
They know my ways.
They know my ways.
What, brother? It was built up. You have done the deeds of the country for 40 years. Do you see the things? You have seen the things. You have seen the mercy of God. You have seen the blessings. They have seen the blessings of God. They have seen the blessings of God. They have seen the blessings of God. They have seen the blessings. 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 They have done everything. What does God say to them? "The people who have gone far, "they know my ways." Then, I will give them the blessings. I will give them the blessings. But I will give them the blessings. Then, I will give them the blessings. Then, I will give them the blessings. Then, I will give them the blessings. I will tell you about the 60 years. "He has preached the gospel of the Lord of the Land." "He has preached the gospel of the Lord." "He has preached the gospel of God." "In our Indian property, we bought it." "The government built the road." "The roads were paved." "Where is the house?" "I am telling you the good things." "I am interpreting them." All this can be done. I waited for a long time. I could not find the mercy. But God gave me mercy. I had to pay the money. I had to pay the money. I did not know my wife. I was scared. I did not know the way. He preached. You can come and share testimony after testimony. But in the end, "Who is watching you?" "You know my ways." "You understand my ways." "How should I buy them?" "I was there." I will tell you another thing. It does not matter who your pastor is. It does not matter who your spiritual leader is. I am saying, "Uparamam, 31st century."
I am listening to your prayer. You are still alive. You have preached the gospel to God. I have preached the gospel to God. Your son, your disciples, your disciples. I will tell you these stories. 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 "The people of the country will obey you." "You will be punished by your actions." "You will be punished by your actions."
"What is your pastor saying?"
"You will be punished by your actions."
"What is your pastor saying?" "When I was there, I had the frauds." "When I was gone, I had the frauds." "Who is it?" "Moses." So, it does not matter who your spiritual leader is. Because in the story of the rich man and Lazarus, the priest said, "I have told you everything." "You already have Moses and the prophets." "Tell them." "Then, what is watching you?" "I will give you the leaders." 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 "But when you watch them, what does God say?" "You see all the blessings." "You see all the blessings." "You see them." "Why are you celebrating today?" "He says, 'Sharda, Ajish, Savaya, "he has been working for a long time.'" "You have seen the deeds of the country." "I see the things." "I have seen the deeds." "You are building up." "I have to do justice to the passage because he has given a proper context." "They have done everything." "I have told them everything." "The people who have gone far, "they do not know my ways." "I have blessed them." "They see all the blessings." "They have experienced the 60 years." "Even in one country, there is no blessing of God." "There is no blessing of God." "The people who have gone far, "they do not know what is happening." "They do not know what is happening." "Because if you are going after blessings, after blessings, after blessings, "you will not understand the heart of God." "Reynard Bongke said, "in a country, in a human life, "you have to move from the blessings of God to the purpose of God." "What is the hope in your life?" "Why did God tell me?" "Why did he kill me?" "If I go through this thought process, "why did I come here?" "What is going on here?" "What is going on in my family?" "I gave you two children." "What will you do with them?" "This is a life for God." "What is the hope in God?" "If God is there, then all the things will happen." "But what is happening to you in the process?" "Do you understand my ways?" "Or do you understand my ways?" "I see the world of the Lord." "I see the world of the Lord." "Because the other countries have brought the diseases." "The petrol companies have brought the diseases." "He is not the second generation." "When the country has brought the diseases, "a royal prince has come to talk." "He is at the topmost position where he can have access to the king." "A king has a royal throne. He is a competitor." "He has tested his food before. Let us think." "If someone who has come from the country "gives such a big position of secrecy, "what will he do?" "He will be disturbed." "Lord, you have protected me." "You have given me a good standing." "Don't say that." "The people will be troubled." "I cannot live like this." "The information comes in December." "It is in April." "I am not disturbed." "The information comes in December. "I am sleeping, I am praying, I am dreaming." "I am dreaming." "Three months, a fellow is not able to sleep, not because of his problem." "He is okay." "Daniel, look." "He is very happy in Aranman." "When the 9th century passed, "you have said that 70 years will pass." "The people will leave." "He is not happy." "He is not happy." "He is not happy." "The 84th century." "He is crying." "I am thinking, "What is your character?" "Do you have personal issues?" "Why are you thinking?" "It is not for you." "Because they understood, "my purpose is aligned with the heart of God." "Yes, the blessings." "But what is the point of God?" "He is worried." "I have seen the blessings." "Let us see the blessings." "We can experience the blessings." "We can experience the blessings." "What am I saying?" "I am not sure. "Because we do not have a relationship with God. "So, I should ask some questions." "Your children, "Do you want to eat tomorrow?" "Do you want to buy something?" "Every day, your children will say, "Do you want to eat today?" "Do you want to eat tomorrow?" "Do you want to eat tomorrow?" "Do you want to eat tomorrow?" "Then, what is it?" "The child has not understood the father." "There are believers at the same level. "There are believers at the same level." "God has said, "you are the frauds." "You are the frauds. "You are the frauds." "You are the frauds." "For your heavenly Father knows "that you need all these things." "In the morning of the day, Lord, "our blessings are essential. "They are essential." "Through this, we will see our lives." "Jesus said, "This is my beloved son. "I am well pleased." "When the rain starts, "we will think, "he is going to the market." "No, no, no." "Because of who he is, "he understands my heart." "2th Corinthians, "9th century, "1st century."
"Because what is it? "The good things that a person does in the body, "the good things that a person does in the body, "we must preach to all of us. "Because we are afraid of God. "We must tell the man. "We are afraid of God. "We are afraid of God. "We must preach to all of us. "We must preach to all of us. "We must preach to all of us.
"Go, go, go." "9th century."
"Because we are in the body, "we must preach to all of us. "We must preach to all of us.
"We must preach to all of us.
"Because what is it?"
"Because what is it?"
"The good things that a person does in the body."
"The good things that a person does in the body."
"The good things that a person does in the body."
"Freddie Joseph's good things." "The good things." "The good things." "The good things."
"We must preach to all of us.
"We must preach to all of us.
"Because we are afraid of God. "We must tell the man."
"Who is saying this?" "Chorundu? "I don't hear the faith." "The faith." "We must all appear before the judgment seat of Christ, "so that each of us may receive what is due for us, "the things done while in the body, "whether good or bad." "Many Christians are talking about the Lord." "We should not confuse justification, glorification, sanctification." "Paul said, "The Lord is speaking." "The faith says, "how we will live in the body." "What should we do?" "We must give our dreams to God." "In English Bible, "knowing the terror of the Lord, we persuade all men." "Knowing the terror of the Lord, we persuade all men." "Then, how do I live?" "How has the Christian life changed?" "Moses said, "You failed to demonstrate my holiness." "You have done a lot of things in your life, Moses. "But when you see my life, "what should I do?" "Demonstrate?" "Don't say that. "I have experienced the blessings of God in your life. "I know that you are God." "They know my power. "You have experienced my provision. "You have experienced my plan. "You have experienced my protection." "All of us are satisfied." "But I will tell you what is it." "The people have a plague in their life. "The people have a plague in their life. "Then, the priest said, "He is not going to die." "You have given us all the blessings. "He is not going to die." "What is God saying to you?" "No." "He loves me. "He has a relationship with me." "Then, I am thinking, "Lord, "he has come to stop the priest." "What is he saying to you?" "He has experienced the blessings." "He has experienced the blessings." "He has done everything to give us the blessings of God." "But in the morning of the day, "your sins will happen. "Your worship will be done. "Swami, let us pray for a peaceful life." "When you see my face, "what will you tell me?" "When you see my eyes, "what will you tell me?" "When you see my mother, "what will you tell me?" "When you see my relatives, "what will you tell me?" "God is good, and he can see it." "God can see it in my life." 40 years. 60 blessings. "But I have experienced my ways." "My eyes are blind." "Why do you love me?" "Why do you love me?" "You are the one I love." 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 "The saints are the ones who know." "You are the one I love." "The saints are the ones who know." "You are the one I love." "Say it again." "You are the one I love." 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 "The saints are the ones who know." "You are the one I love." "The saints are the ones who know." "You are the one I love." "I love you. "Why do you love me?" "Why do you love me?" "You are the one I love." "We have seen the behavior of the Lord." "You know the blessings of your life. "You are the God who protects me. "You are the God who protects me. "You are the God who protects me." "Who am I, and you understand me? "I will defeat you." "Then, what is it?" "Lord, who am I, and I will defeat you? "In my life, who am I, and I will defeat you? "In your life, you are the God who protects me." "Because of that, I am grateful." "You are the God who protects me. "You are the God who protects me." "You are the God who protects me." "You are the God who protects me. "You have done everything, the best of the best." "Lord, in the morning of the day, "I am in the rain." அப்பா உம்முடை ரத்தகோட்டைக்குளாக நான் இருக்கிறேனா? அந்த ரத்தம் போசப்பட்ட என ஏசுவினக்காக மறித்து என் சாபங்களை எடுத்துப்போட்டா? என்கின்ற நம்பிக்கையோட அந்த வீட்டிற்குள் நான் இருக்கும்படி. கற்றருடிய ரத்தம் போசப்பட்ட வீட்டிற்குள் இருக்கும்படி. அந்த வாழ்க்கைக்குள் இருக்கும்படி கிருபைச் செய்வீராக. கடைசியாக எல்லாவற்றும் பார்த்துவிட்டு நீ ரந்த ஜனங்களைக் குறித்து சொன்ன சாட்சியைப் பார்கிறோம். ஆண்டவரே எங்களைப் பார்க்கும் ஒழுது வழிவிபோன இருது எம்முடையவர்களென்று நீங்க சொல்லக்கூடாதான்டவரே? ஏசுவின் ஸ்வாமியைப் பார்த்து சொன்னீரே? ஆண்டவரே மை பிலாவர் சன் என்று சொன்னீரே? ஐ ஆம் பிளீஸ் வுத் தும் என்று சொன்னீரே? ஆண்டவரே நீங்கள் விருப்பப்படுகின்ற ஒரு வாழ்க்கை வாழ. கிருபையாருங்க ஸ்வாமி. ஆசிரவாதம் மத்திரமில்ல, உம்மை நாட உம்முடிய அங்கிகாரத்தை நாட உம்முடிய வழிகளைப் புரிந்துகொள்ள. கிருபைச் செய்ஙே. ஏசுவின் மொலம்பிதாவே. ஆமே ஆமே.
தைச் செதெல்லாரும் மமர்ப்பிடியக்கேட்கிறோம். இப்போது கற்றுடிய நாமும் முய்மைக்காக நம் சபையாய் காணிக்கை செய்கிறீக்க நேரம். எல்லாரும் இணைத்து நாம். அது தினமும் அது தினமும் அது மகிழ்ந்து இந்த தேவனில் கழிக்கூந்து. அழகளகாய் அவத்துகழை இந்த தேரமே திருவேனே. அது தினமும் அது மகிழ்ந்து இந்த தேவனில் கழிக்கூந்து. அழகளகாய் அவத்துகழை இந்த தேரமே திருவேனே. மாராது விந்து நாமன் மங்காத புகழுள்ள நாமன். மாராது விந்து நாமன் மங்காத புகழுள்ள நாமன். உன்னாமன் நான் சொல்லும் இடத்தில் வந்தென்மையாசி வதிப்பீ. உன்னாமன் நான் சொல்லும் இடத்தில் வந்தென்மையாசி வதிப்பீ. அது தினமும் அது மகிழ்ந்து இந்த தேவனில் கழிக்கூந்து. அழகளகாய் அவத்துகழை இந்த தேரமே திருவேனே. உன்முல்ல நாம மறிந்து அது தினமும் அதை நான் செய்ய. உன்முல்ல நாமன் மறிந்து அது தினமும் அதை நான் செய்ய. உன்னாபக புஸ்தகத்தில் இந்த பேரை நம்பர் செய்ந்தீ. உன்னாபக புஸ்தகத்தில் இந்த பேரை நம்பர் செய்ந்தீ. அது தினமும் அது மகிழ்ந்து இந்த தேவனில் கழிக்கூந்து. அழகளகாய் அவத்துகழை இந்த தேரமே திருவேனே. இப்போது நம்முடை அசிஸ்டன் பார்ஸ்ட் பால் சமியவர்கள். நீண்ட விடுமிரகிப்பறகு இப்போதான் நம்ம தில் வந்திருக்கிறார்கள். அவங்க காணிக்க காக இந்த பஸ் செஷனை தேவன் ஆசிர்வத்ததற்காக ஜபித்து இந்த காணிக்கையை ஆசிர்வதிக்க ஜபத்திரை நம்மை வழி நடத்துவார்கள். இந்த செஷன் முடிந்த பறகு நீங்கள் டைவ் செய்து விரைவாக வாஷ்ரும் சந்துவிட்டு சிக்கிரமாக வருங்கள். ஆராதனை ஆரம்பிக்கிற உடனே இந்த பாடல்கள் படிக்கும்போது நீங்கள் விரைவாக வந்தால் நம்ம சிக்கிரமாக இந்த ரெண்டாவது செஷனை ஆரம்பிப்பதற்கு வசதியாக இருக்கும். தைச் செது உங்களுடை ஒத்துளப்பை நங்கள் சபையாய் கேட்கிறோம்.
நம்மெல்லார் எழுது நின்று ஆண்டவர். இந்த நாளை விசேசித்த நாளாய் ஆண்டவரும் காய் முன்குறித்து அனேஷான் நாட்களுக்குப் பிரப்பாடு இது மாயாரம். குடியவர்படியாய் ஆண்டவர் கிருபைச் செய்தார். கற்றராவுத்திக்கு ஸ்தோத்திரம். ஹலேலூயா. ஹலேலூயா. கேட்ட சத்தியத்தின்படியாய். ஆண்டுடைய ஆசிரவாதத்தை நம்ம நம்பிரு. அதை எப்பட்டுக்கொண்டு நம்ம அனுபத்துக்கொண்டு கிரமா இல்ல. ஆண்டவரும் வாழ்க்கையில் மைத்திருக்கதான சிட்டங்கள். ஆண்டவர் சொல்விரப்பரமாய். அதை அங்கிகரிக்கிறவளாய், அதை ஆதரிக்கிறவளாய். அதன்படி நடக்கிறவளாயிருக்கிறன். ஒரு நம்முடை யோசித்து பார்த்து நம் கரண்சில்வோம். விசேசமான நம்மெல்லாரு. அடுசமுத்து நம்முடைய ஆவியாத்மா சரித்த ஜீவபலியாய் ஒப்புகொடுத்திருக்கிறோம். திரண்டு அவர்க்காய் ஓட ஆண்டு பெலந்தர்படியாய். எல்லார் கரங்களை உயர்த்தி ஆண்டவரும் ஸ்தோத்திரம் நின்னி கரண்போவ. எல்லா ஆண்டவரே இந்த வளைக்காய் நந்திசலுத்திரம். உடைகிருபகளுக்காய், கிரக்கங்களுக்காய் நந்திசலுத்திரம் பா. அடுத்த நீரெங்கள் ஆசிர்வதித்து இந்த தேசத்துக்கொண்டு வந்து ஆண்டவரே. கத்த இந்த நாளு விசேசித்து வெதமாய் ஆண்டவரு சமூத்துலே. ஆண்டவரே நான் கூடியும் ஆராதிக்கே, நல்ல செய்தியைக் கேட்க. ஆண்டவருக்கு ஐக்கித்தில் இன்ன அதிமாய் நாங்க அடுத்த பெலப்படுவ வளரவும். கற்றர் கிருபைச் சேரபடினாலும் உம்க்கு நந்திசலுத்தினதா ஸ்தோத்திரம். ஸ்தோத்திரம் ஓவர் நாளும் ஆண்டவரே. ஆண்டவரே கத்த எங்குடைய ஆவியாத்மா சரித்து உம்க்கு சொந்தமன்பதை மற்றவள் காணத்தகதாய். நாங்க கிருஸ்தங்களில் ஜிவிக்கிறார்மனக்கு ஆண்டவரு மற்றவளுக்கு காணத்தகதான கிருபை நிதர்மடியான சவிக்கிறோம். பர்சுத்த ஆவியானவர் ஆண்டவரே. நீரெங்கள் ஆடு ஓவர் நாளும் ஆண்டுகொண்டு ஆண்டவரே. நீ நடத்துமடியாய் ஆண்டவரே நீ வழிகாட்டுமடியாரு சவிக்கின்ற ஸ்தோத்திரம். ஏசுகிருஸ்தா வாயிலுந்து பிரப்பட்ட கிருபையிலோ வார்த்தைகளைப் போல எங்குடைய வாயிலுந்து கிருபையிலோ வார்த்தைகளோ நன்றி ரச்சிப்பிள் வழி நடத்துமடியாய். ஏசுவைக் காட்டுமடியாய், அவர்டிய அன்பைக் காட்டுமடியாய். அடு மனதுருக்கத்தை ஆண்டவரே மனையிருக்கிறோம் ஆண்டவரு உணவு தூண்டுமடியாய். அடு உதவுச்சுமடியா சவிக்கிறோம். கத்தாவித் தேசத்திற்கு வந்து சம்பாதிக்க கற்றர் கொடுத்த கிருபை நல்ல வழிக்கா ஸ்தோத்திரம். திராணித்தந்தியத்திற்கா ஸ்தோத்திரம், ஜானத்தித்தந்தியத்திற்கா ஸ்தோத்திரம். இப்போது மாய் ஆண்டவரே கற்றர் கொடுத்த எல்லாது ஒரு சின்ன காணிக்கை ஆண்டவரே. உடைசமுத்துல படைத்திருக்கிறோம். தேவரே, நீர் ஆண்டவரே. வானத்தியை மூமியுண்டாக்கிறன் சர்வவலம்ல தேவன். ஆண்டவரே நீராய் ஆண்டவர் அங்கிகரித்த ஆசிர்வதிக்குமடியா சவிக்கிறோம். கொடுத்த பிள்ளைகள் இந்த நலமைலே இந்த கொடுத்தார்மன் நீ அறிந்திருக்கிறீர். இந்த பிள்ளைகள் காடுவரே, நீர் ஆண்டவரே. வானத்திர் பலிகளுக்கு தென்ன ஆசிர்வதிக்கிற ஆண்டவர். திரைவாய் ஆசிர்வதிக்குமடியா சவிக்கிறோம். ஆசிர்வதியும் திரண்டு நீங்கள் ஓடுகொடை ஆண்டவரு பிரசனத்திலே அன்ன இருக்கத்தகதாய் ஆண்டவரு உதவுச்சுமடியா சவிக்கிறோம். ஆண்டவர் ரச்சகரமாயிருக்க ஏசுகிருஸ்தாவத்தில் ஜவிக்கிறோம் நல்லப்பிதாவே. ஆமே ஆமே. கற்றுடிய ஆசிர்வதிப்பாக்குத் தம்ஸ்தோ.
ஆமே. எல்லாரும் அமைதியாக நம்முடைய தவனத்தை ஆண்டவருக்கு நேராக திருப்புவோ? நம்முடை இசுந்தைகளை ஆண்டவருக்கு நேராக திருப்புவோம் ரெண்டாவது செஷன். நம்முடை தெரித்த நேரத்திற்கு அதிகமாய் கிரண்டுபோய்க்கு நின்றுக்கிறோம். டைவ் செய்து நீங்கள் ரூட்காருமடி அன்போடுக்கெட்டு குழுகுறோம். வெளியினிருக்கிறவர்களும் துரிதமாய் வந்து அமரும். ஹலேலூயா. ஹலேலூயா. நம்மெல்லாரும் சத்தியத்து சொல்லலாமா? ஹலேலூயா. ஆமேன். சங்கிதம் 1264 சொல்விரது மூன்று. கற்றர் நமக்குப் பெரிய காரிங்கள் செய்தார். இதினிமித்தம் நாம் மகிழ்ந்திருக்கிறோம்.
I go with me I go with you I go with me I go with you I go with me I go with you It's a day, it's a day In the morning It's a day, it's a day In the morning I go with me I go with you I go with me I go with you It's a day, it's a day 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 I go with me I go with you I go with me I go with you He is a saint, he is a saint He is a holy one He is a saint, he is a saint He is a holy one I go with me I go with you I go with me I go with you
Namely, we are all here, Hallelujah. We have seen our Lord. We have praised him. With his face, he praised us. We have left all our sorrows. His mercy has been there forever. God has blessed our lives. He has praised us. The world has changed. Our children have been blessed. Our Lord has blessed them. He is our God. I have prayed for this. I say, "We are blessed. We are blessed to be with God. To give God our salvation. To give him our mercy and mercy and mercy." That is why he has blessed his people. He has blessed them. That is why we have to serve him. We cannot worship him. If we worship him, he will change us. We do not worship him only for his salvation. If we worship him, we will worship him. If we worship him, we will worship him. Hallelujah, Hallelujah.
My love, my heart My Lord, my son You are my God You are my Jesus My love, my heart My Lord, my son You are my God You are my Jesus Jesus, you are my God You are my God Jesus, you are my God You are my God Why do you worry? Why do you worry? Your heart is crying Why do you worry? Why do you worry? Your heart is crying My heart is crying My heart is crying I am crying My heart is crying My heart is crying My heart is crying I am crying My heart is crying Jesus, you are my God You are my God Jesus, you are my God You are my God Why do you worry? Why do you worry? Your heart is crying Why do you worry? Why do you worry? Your heart is crying My heart is crying I am crying My heart is crying My heart is crying My heart is crying I am crying My heart is crying My heart is crying Jesus, you are my God You are my God Jesus, you are my God You are my God Why do you worry? Why do you worry? Your heart is crying Why do you worry? Why do you worry? Your heart is crying Why do you worry? Why do you worry? Your heart is crying Why do you worry? Why do you worry? Your heart is crying
Your heart is crying. I have not seen your heart before. I have not seen your heart before. We have seen your mercy. We have conquered your blessings. We have conquered your path. Lord, you are great. You are great. If you are in your God, you have to pray. You have to pray. This is the Lord. Brother Freddie Joseph, we will pray.
I am singing. My heart is crying. My heart is crying. My heart is crying. I am singing. My heart is crying. 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 My heart is crying.
Sing.
My children are singing. My children are singing. You are a saint, a saint. You are a saint. You are a saint, a saint. You are a saint. My heart is crying. 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 My heart is crying.
Amen. Lord, in the second session, we will pray. This is the Lord.
My heart is crying. I am crying. My heart is crying. I am crying. I am crying. I am crying. My heart is crying. I am crying. I am crying. Jesus, I am crying. I am crying. Jesus, I am crying. God, Raja, pray for me. God, Raja, pray for me. My heart is crying. I am crying. My heart is crying. I am crying. I am crying. I am crying. My heart is crying. I am crying. He is a saint. Jesus, pray for me. He is a saint. Jesus, pray for me. The angels are singing. They are singing. The angels are singing. They are singing. My heart is crying. I am crying. My heart is crying. I am crying. I am crying. I am crying. My heart is crying. I am crying.
15 years ago, I released my CD. At that time, I was a young man, 26 years old. When I was older, they would release my CD. I was a Catholic Christian. I was born in a Catholic church background. My mother was Protestant, my father was Catholic. I was a Catholic Christian. I was an altar boy when I was little. I was very close to my grandmother. My grandmother was divorced. She had a secret assignment. So, I was at home, and I was listening to VBS. I was a little kid. My neighbors were 8, 10 years old. I connect with the older generation better even now. So, I started to be a little kid. I was a very angry child. But I had deep thoughts. Because my grandmother would do anything, she would be great. Lucky child. She went to Holy Angels' Conference. She went to Raveetiy Ramya Krishnan Cinema Actors. She went to Brahmin CEOs' school. But I had a question. I needed somebody to love me, not because I am successful, as I am. I was at home, and I was listening to VBS. I was sleeping. I was playing cricket. My grandmother gave me a gift. I was sitting, and we played. Brother Albert Solomon was my VBS teacher. He was on night duty at ICF. During that, he gave me a lot of puffs. He was very good. He told stories. He played. So, I divorced him. But when I was in the youth fellowship, I was with my neighbors. I was in the youth fellowship. I was in the youth fellowship. My father was a driver. He wanted to teach my kids. A hard-working man. When I was 17, my father had a heart attack. I was 2 plus. July 14, my grandmother passed. July 19, he was alive. But when I was 12, I was with my grandmother. My father said, "You don't know that. The children of your family, your family, your family..." "I know you are a father to the fatherless." I was very well educated. My mother made me a powder called Surf Dudgeon Powder. I wanted to start my work soon. I wanted to go to college. I worked at DGP Streetball Company in ₹1,600. My father was a sales officer. I didn't see what happened with sales. But God used me. Before 4 years, Brother John Joseph was born. A wonderful man of God. He greeted me with a crucifix. He said, "Never think your physical appearance is an accident. You will understand." I didn't understand. No one has seen me as a 18-year-old tourist. I started my business after a month. Procter &amp; Gamble, Ford, RPG Cellular, Satyam Computers. They are all my clients. So, I worked for 95 Indians for ₹400, ₹500. For 95, I worked for ₹40,000. How much money did I earn? My grandmother taught me 700. Then I thought, "Why am I so hard?" But I knew that God had a great plan for my life. I had a big idea. I wanted to work. I want to go to America. I want to go to India. I wanted to go to India. Scriptural Union has two camps. They tell the story about the children. This is our blueprint. But when I came, I wanted to be a tent maker. I should be only under your control. After 2, 3 months, I went to America. I could go to India. In 2003, I started working. In 2008, I started working. You have been a good uncle. You have been a good uncle. The meeting is good, but the people are not happy. In 2019, I told you some of the things. I have been punished. Some people are asking. Some people are asking. I told them, "I have been punished." I want to help you. I remember you are a disciple group. Everyone can read the Bible. But how to read the Bible? We have started sessions on Zoom. The sixth batch is coming. Many people have come. They don't have the process. They are doing it. I am asking Pastor. I am just giving you this offer. We want to learn the Bible. Do you read it? I don't know. Many pastors say, "I read the Bible every day." "How do you read it?" I don't know. I am really enjoying the Bible. If you read the Bible, you will understand your heart. If you do that, we will allocate one day. One day, 2 hours Zoom. But if you tell me something, you have to do an assignment. If you do nothing, you will be in the group. This is not negotiable. Who does it? They have a name. Discipline is strict. We will talk about that. There are 6 verses. If you read it, I will tell you. If you are in the group, you will be in the group. We can do it for 40 days. We will meet once a week. But if you read the Bible, you will learn. If you can, if you want to do it. 50 people, 100 people, it is okay. But one reason, you have to waste your time. You have to waste your time. If you have an assignment. I am going to FPL. Now, there are 6 churches in Tamil Nadu. They have a batch. After that, all of them are useful. If you want to learn how to study God's Word in meditation method for 40 days, please contact Pastor. We will see how we can take it forward. Amen. Ruth Bustagam. Before that, Romans 22. 1-2 verse.
I want you to do, God helping you. This is what I want you to do, God helping you. This is what I want you to do, God helping you.
Okay. I am translating it. There is a beautiful translation. So, here is what I want you to do, God helping you. This is what I want you to do, God helping you. Take your everyday ordinary life. Your sleeping, eating, going to work, and walking around life. Your daily life. Put it before God as an offering. Take what God does for you is the best thing you can do for Him. What does God do for you? That is what you do for Him. Don't become so well-adjusted to your culture that you fit into it without even thinking. You will be changed from the inside out. Instead, fix your attention on God. Focus on God. Ready to recognize what He wants from you. What does He see in you? Understand it and quickly respond to it. Do it. Always dragging you unlike the culture around you. You will be changed from the inside out. Instead, fix your attention on God. Focus on God. Always recognize what He wants from you. Understand it and quickly respond to it. You have a talent, you don't have to hold it back. You are a talent, you are a talent. But God, when he sees you, he will give you the best. This is the Romans 21. Ruth, Ruth's book.
Many prophets traveled to the country. The country was full of gold. This young man, Bethlehem, a man who was a royal. His two brothers were also killed in Moab. The name of the man is Eli Malik. His name is Nahumi.
Okay. In the days when the judges ruled, there was a famine in the land. So, a man from Bethlehem and Judah, together with his wife and two sons, went to live for a while in the country of Moab. When the prophets were working, there was a coin. This is a story in Tamil. In English Bible, saw a man from Bethlehem, Judah, together with his wife. Bethlehem young man, he and his two daughters, lived in Moab, a country. His name is Eli Malik. The meaning of Eli Malik, my God is my king. God is my king. The meaning of Bethlehem, house of bread and praise. Bethlehem youth, house of bread and praise. The meaning of Moab, is it? The washing machine, dustbin. Moab, a song by Sangeetam 108. Moab's washing machine is a dustbin. My father saw, God, a king. He was in a town, in a town, he came to Moab. He went for a while. Understand? Do you understand? God, a king, he was in a town, in a town, he was in a town. He was not alive, he went for a while. This is Ruth's story. For a short term, it was a short term decision. I am a leader of the family, I don't bother my family. I want the family to be good, I thought it was wrong. It was a father's responsibility. In Moab, they lived 50 miles away from Bethlehem. 7 hours, 10 hours, a distance. When they were there, the coin was always there. When the people asked, Abraham gave him a blessing, Isaac gave him a blessing. Yahweh gave him a blessing, when the coin was there, what should I do? But here, is it Eli Malik, the head of the family? Because of that, he is in the family. He saw, there is no bread in the house, but a dustbin has bread. So, for a while, the house of bread is there. So, for a while, what should we do? We should go to Moab. He took the family. It was a clear decision for the family. But when I asked God, I researched. Now, the coin is there, where should we go? A short term decision. When you take the decision, what is happening?
The man's name is Eli Malik.
I'll read the verse.
The man's name is Eli Malik. His name is Nahumi. His two brothers have a brother called Maglo. The other one is Gili. Young men, Bethlehem, a royal, a prince. They went to Moab. Nahumi's son, Eli Malik, left. She and her two brothers were there. They married in Moab. Their name is Orbal, their name is Ruth. They lived there for 10 years. Then Maglo and Gili, who were there, left. The woman, her brother, and her son, left alone.
A short term decision. 70 miles, 50 miles, 7 hours, 10 hours. Now, the decision is right. He took it. The decision was wrong, he didn't see it. It wasn't his decision. But the decision was wrong. After 10 years, their life was settled. They became comfortable, but after 10 years, they forgot to eat. The two daughters were divorced, they married. If they married, who would be the husband? The husband was God, the children. Your one decision, another decision. The consequences of that decision. Now, when Nahumi is a follower of God, she has two brothers. The follower of God is not seen. As a leader of the family, I researched about the followers. I researched about it, I researched about it. What do you say? Now, what is a follower of God? When we discuss the followers, we have to understand everything. There is a consequence. Because we think it will be successful, after a while, it will happen. We have to plan it. But what is happening? 10 years, the fortunes of the family, the blessings of the family, all changed. The main three things of the family are not there. The followers are very harmful. Now, when you take the followers, when Nahumi is a follower of God, she has two brothers.
When the people of God met, she asked about Moab. She also asked about Moab.
Now, Moab is there, but when the children are young, they don't have to be anywhere. Moab is where they are. But when Moab is there, they are in the house. I started meeting the people of Bethlehem. I have a wish, she is throwing a wish. You are there, God is with you, now you are in Moab. God is with you, what is the news? I have a wish. You are coming, I am starting to write in Bethlehem. When the children are young, you don't hear the news. When Moab is there, you hear the news. When you are young, you are a young man. When I took the followers, during the time of the followers, when the people were very harmful, when the children are young, I have a wish. What does he say? He knows how to find out the truth. But when I make a decision, it is the main thing. The verse is clear. She and her daughters-in-law prepared to return home from there. He is in Moab. He needs Bethlehem. He needs a coin, for a while, I came here. But a while, some pieces came. I took the name of my life. I don't have anything else. God came to me, he said, my mind is there. When he is here, he gives you a wish. I will do the same things in Bethlehem. When the wish comes, what should I do? I am going to go back to Moab. If I change the followers, I will take a U-turn on the way I came. Repentance, when you are there, you take a U-turn. What did Nahumi decide? I lost my dream. But I didn't go back to Moab. I believe there is a restoration. God is doing something. I want to go back. God, if you have a wish, you will give me a wish. Nahumi decided, I am going to leave everything and go back. 2nd verse.
He left the place where he had been living, set out on the road that would take them back to the land of Judah.
He left the place, whatever path I take, I will take them back to Moab. He is there, he is there. In English Bible, she left the place where she had been living, set out on the road that would take them back to the land of Judah. He left the place, whatever path I take, I will take them back to Moab. He is there, he is there. He is taking the brothers, they are coming, they are coming. He said, you don't have to come. 13th verse.
They are the most powerful. If the world is not good, you will be poor. You don't have to. My friends, God is with me. You have a good relationship with me.
God's love. To me. So, she has concluded, husband took the followers. He is standing there. God's love is with me. You are struggling, because Moab is your country. You are there, I said. What is the theology of him? I took the followers, that's why he is standing there. The meaning of Nahumi is pleasant. The meaning of pleasant. A pleasant, in Tamil. A character, you saw it. A pleasant person. Now, he is saying, God's love is with me. I don't have to go, I will go. But in that verse, 14, Ruth is talking. Arfa, what is he doing? He is going, but Ruth, what does she say? I won't go, I am there. He said, you will go, or you won't go. 16th verse.
Ruth, I want to talk about you, I want to talk about you. You will go, I will come. You are my daughter, I am your daughter. Your family, my family, your God, my God. You will die, I will die. You will die. If you die, you will die. God is good, God is good. I have a friend.
Here, there are two followers. One is Eli Malik. Eli Malik took the followers. He left the place where he was. He left the coin for the rain. He left the house of bread to the dustbin. For survival. The end was there, two children died. He died too. But Ruth, Moab. When he was in the coin, he was there. He left the place, he is there. My God, my God. Where are you? I am there. I don't know what will happen to you. I don't know if you are a friend. But I am taking a follower. I am there. Two people took the followers. What is the difference between Eli Malik and Ruth? What is the difference between Ruth and Ruth? Why we are taking followers, God is with us. Ruth explains beautifully. God is my king. He was in a town, he left the dustbin. But the girl in Moab, she doesn't have any talent. She is looking at the prince of Israel. Who is the prince of Israel? He is not there. Just because they are married, God doesn't approve of the decision. But what I am saying? When we take the followers, God is with us. God is my king, he is taking the followers. But the girl Ruth, she is my God. I am there. You are dead, I am there. 18th verse, when Nahumi realized that truth was determined to go with her, she stopped urging her. She knew it, she didn't want to. What did she do? She didn't stop. 15th verse.
The others went to Bethlehem. When they came to Bethlehem, everyone looked at them. They asked whether they are Nahumi. She said, you are Nahumi. Moral, you say. She told me a bad story.
A person who was pleasant, a person who was friendly. Now, I am saying, she gave you a bad thing. She has a guilt conscious. Victim mentality. He is with me. I am sorry. He is with me. We took the followers. So, God is against me. Don't call me Nahumi, call me Mara.
I went to the river.
I went to the river.
God gave me a wish.
God. When I went, I was there. I went, I was there. But now, when I come, I am here.
God gave me a wish.
God gave me a wish.
She told me a wish. You are Nahumi.
What a understanding of our life. But what is wrong with me? During the 10 years, the events happened. He told God. God's love is with me. God did this to me. I don't complain. My life is bad. He told me a bad thing. This is what is happening. But Ruth, this is not bothering. If you don't know, you are talking to God negatively. Your behavior should be changed. But when God is with you, Ruth, you don't assess your actions. By any means, God is with Ruth. Even if you say something negative about the girl who is with Ruth, Ruth doesn't have an opinion of God. Read it.
Now, Nahumi, Moab's wife, Ruth, went to Moab. She came to Bethlehem. Nahumi's son, Eli Malik, was there. When he saw the curse of Boav, I went to the river, I don't have a choice. I will tell stories to him. He said, my daughter, go. She went, she saw the people. She went to the river.
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 She went to the river, Eli Malik was a woman of Boav. When Boav came to Bethlehem, he saw the people. He said, you are there. They said, God is with you. Then Boav, seeing the people, looked at the woman. He asked who is the woman. Seeing the people, he saw the woman. She came to Moab with Nahumi. Seeing the people, I think about it.
I have a coin, but Moab is wrong. So, I want to go to Moab, intentionally, I took the decision. Is it right? Intentionally researched, intentionally researched. I arranged it better, it better. I arranged it all, I took the decision. I took it. But Ruth. You say everything, you understand everything. I am there, you are God, I am God. The girl also took a follower. She doesn't know about it. My mom said, I will go and see. She said, I am here. She said, I am here. Now she is going. She said, introduction. Now there was a woman named Boavast. She was the wife of the wife. She is a redeemer. She is the one who saved the family. 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 She will go for a while. But what is he doing? She is going. I planned, researched. I wanted my family to be good. But the decision made by my family. The decision was taken. The children were taken. But there was no planning. When I was in the forest, I was thinking about my father. When I was in my mother's house, I asked. If my mother doesn't make a mistake. If I make a mistake, I will make it right. I will go back. I did not research. But I believe you. What I am doing now. I changed it to happiness. I am doing it. But I planned intentionally. I researched. I asked. Now he is in your life. You can do it. You can do it. He gives you happiness. He comes and he comes. He asked information. He said, look. He has everything he needs. This is God's favor over your life. When you are in a place where you have not been before. Who is he? I don't know. But when he believes you, he orchestrated the action. Amen? He is saying, who is he? Who is he?
To Boavast, you saw your husband. You did it for your mother. You did it for your father. You did it for your birth. You came to the future. It all was different. If you are blessed, God will give you a blessing. If you are the God of Israel, God gave you blessings. If you are blessed, God will give you a lot of blessings.
I understand. This is beautiful. You came to God. What you are doing now. Correct? He took you away. Now she is asking. She bowed down with her face to the ground. She asked him, why have I found such favor in your eyes that you notice me, a foreigner? I don't know. Why do you have so much difficulty? She is saying, you are very good. I asked you how you are. I asked. So I have a favor for you. Who are you? For that I have a favor. If you have a favor, you came to me. What you are doing now. I will make a complaint. But I have a favor for you. It is your behavior. If God is with me, I will do it. He is doing the work that he is doing in my life. If I have a good deed, I will be blessed. Do you understand? Do you understand? God's favor. He took you away. But he is asking, why are you blessed? Because of who you are. Now he is doing what he is doing in his life. At the same time, Joseph was born. He was neither. He was neither. So he didn't see anything. Now he is coming to this country. If you want to see God, you can see him. If you want to go to a company, he will do it. At the same time, the next disaster. Because you are like this, I am showing you favor. Understand? So he is blessed. 13th verse.
To you, my daughter, you should find me. I will be with you. I will be with you. You tell me your stories. You talk to your friends. Then Boavast saw her. You came to this place. You stole her. When she was around, she was scared. She gave her scolding. She ate and stayed.
Stayed?
Stayed.
Stayed? Stayed?
Stayed.
Please.
When she picked up the book, Boavast looked at the family member. She was scared. She must be healed. She was scared. She said, some of you have doubted. She said, you have done it. Then she only talked about it in the river. She read it. She read it. She took it and went to the river. She read it. She ate and stayed.
She ate.
She ate.
She ate and was scared. She gave it to her. She ate and she took it. See, all these things matter in God's eyes. I give you a favor. A favor is unmerited favor. I will explain. You will get a balance. You are talking about favor. Favor, favor, favor. Favor, God giving you what you don't deserve. Unmerited favor. I don't have a favor. Another word is mercy. Mercy, God not giving me what I deserve. If I don't have a reward. I don't have a reward. God's justice is right. I give you a favor. Sorry, justice. Some qualifications are required in a company. If you have the qualifications, you will have a job. You didn't fix the qualification. You didn't fulfill the qualification. Now she is saying, you didn't fulfill the minimum qualification. I will give you this job. What is it? What is it? Favor. After going to the job, after a year. You took a machine. What did you do? You stopped the machine. That is the company's loss. She is saying, you are doing the job. You are doing the job. Today, you can't do the U A E. I will put a black mark on you. That is what you did. I said, you did it. The general manager said, no, no, no. Do not do that. Give him one more. What is it? Mercy. You have done a lot of work. You are promoting. You are increasing the salary. You are not doing anything. I will give you my favor. You will listen. Justice. God giving you what you deserve. Understand? Now Ruth's life is perfect. He is going. There is difficulty. At the same time, do you know the law of God? Because you are this, I am able to do this in your life. I am watching your goodness. You are doing the job. Mom is there. She is going. It is a small thing. It is documented. It demonstrates a person's character. As I said. You are a good person. You are a good person. You are not good. You are not good. Now we need to think. I must esteem somebody more than me. I must give them importance. Ruth is saying, Mom is here. She gave it to him. God is watching it. 19th verse.
When his mom speaks, she asks where she is. She says, she will be blessed. When she is in the river. She said, I am the one who is doing the work. Boavast. When Naomi saw the children. If you are with others, God will bless you. Then Naomi saw him. The man is our friend. We are the friends of Sondra. Then Ruth, a woman of Moab, looked at me. I was scared.
Now she is saying, how long has God been with you? He has done some bad things to me. He is punishing me. God has not stopped showing his kindness. He saw the death. Now it is burning. Mom, even if you did something wrong. I am the God of the earth. I am watching you. How long have you been doing this? I have been telling you about your children. I have been watching you. In all this process, even if you did something wrong. I am watching you. Even if you are a woman, I am the one who gave you the oath. You are doing the oath. That is your decision. But I am saying, I am saying. She is telling, God has not stopped me, stopped me to some kindness. 11th verse.
Then Ruth looked at Moab. She said, I was scared. She said, you are also.
He is a redeemer. He is the one who can do this. 12th verse.
Then Naomi looked at him. My child, you are healthy. I will not be scared of you. You are with Boavast's family. He is our friend. He will be with you in the night. You will be with him. When he is in the night, the man will be scared. He will not look at you. When he is sleeping, you will watch him. You will shave his head. What you want to do is, he will tell you. He will do everything I say to you. He will do everything my mother did to him. Boavast was scared. He went to the river. When he went to the river, he shaved his head. When the man was there in the night, he saw a woman. He asked, who are you? I am your friend Ruth. You are my friend. You are Sondra.
Okay, I understand. Two little boys. Two little boys. Are you crying? Two boys. Come up. Come up. How do you do? How do you do? You sit down. Sit down. Are you bleeding? Put the towel. See, you have to understand what is happening. Naomi said, the one who can meet my family. He is. Right? Threshold. The threshold. A place where you can open. There is no room for four floors. They are all wearing dress. Now Naomi said, he is the one who can meet my family. He has difficulty. He has difficulty. If you want to meet my family, you said. He will go and we will have mercy. Who is he? Boavast. What is he doing? He is sleeping. He is sleeping. Naomi said, what Ruth is doing now is. Is this? She is covering her leg. She said, you will meet us. Who is in my family? You are the one who meets us. But I am not going to meet you. I am not going to meet you. Would you redeem me? She said, she is going to kill him. Who is watching? She is saying, she is sitting. Please. 13th verse.
To you, my child, you are blessed. You are not going to go to the ends of the earth. You will see your son.
Your son?
You will see.
See.
Your son is immortal.
There is a favor. What have you done to your mother? So I will be watching you. Now you have seen your son. When you are romantic. You want to meet my family. What are you doing? You have seen your son. I am showing you what happens when a person like Elimelech makes a wrong decision. That is the consequence. But a girl believes God. God is watching you. But she has a good deed. He is doing it. He is watching. You are eating. I am noting it. Look, I am noting it. She is telling you, I am watching what you are doing. Let me see your son. This is mint. Please.
Now, my child, you don't worry. I will do everything I need. You are a good person. I am Sondra.
Now you are a good person. You are the one who knows.
I am Sondra. But many have a friend. He is with you in the night. He is nice. He is nice. He is not a man. I will be with you. I will keep God's life. I will sleep. She slept. He was sleeping. He was sleeping. He is not knowing. He looked at her. He saw your behavior. When he saw it, he went to the river. He went to the river. When he came to his mom. He asked, what is your action? He said, he is doing everything he is doing to you. He said, you need to go to your mom. He gave me the scolding. He said, my child, what is this? You understand. The man will not do it.
Okay, you will see. The redeemer is here. I am here. I want to take responsibility. He said, I will take care of the family. You are 12th verse.
When Boavast looked at the children. All the people who were there. All the people who were there. You are the one who bought it. You will do this. Even if they are not good, even if they are poor, even if they are rich, they will be blessed. Mahal is a great woman. I am a great woman. You will do this. When all the people of the holy temple look at him, we are the ones who worship the Lord. He is like a two-person angel. He is like a lady. He will do this. He will be a great person.
13th verse.
Boas worshipped Ruth. She is a great woman. When he came to her, he cursed a girl. When all the women saw Nahomi, he wished for the Lord to be blessed. He wished for the Lord to be blessed. His name is in the history. He is a great person.
When they say Naomi, I will not say Naomi. I will not say Maran. But I am grateful to Naomi. We talked a little too much. At the end, when he saw his happiness, they said, "God has been favorable to you." What is beautiful? 17th verse.
The people of the village, Nahomi's girl is born. They are ashamed. He is like David.
David? He is like David. Then Ruth is... Boas is his father. Ruth came to the picture. A poor man. "Lord, God." He went to the village to study. He decided to do it. He decided to do it. His children did it. Even if it was a failure, God did it wrong. Then he said, "Do you wish me to be blessed?" When he asked, "What did Jesus do in the new world?" The picture is about Boas. Ruth's doing. Naomi's doing. You did it wrong. But I am the one who wants to meet you. There are mistakes. But when I do it, David and Kumar are Jesus. He wished for this wrong decision. Do you understand? A wrong decision. He made a wrong decision. But he asked. He did it wrong. But where did the story start? When he was in the mood, he knew that God is doing things in Bethlehem. He wanted to go to Bethlehem. That is the starting point. Elimelech made a poor man. He had a problem. But he did not know. He did not know. He wanted to be saved. Ruth's gift, only the family gift. Only the family gift. Today, you will meet. David's family. Jesus is coming. He wished for this wrong decision. "Mother, restore me. Redeem me." When he said that, he changed the wrong way. In the evening, we are with the children. We are with the family. Some time, we worship Naomi. People ask, "Is this okay? Is this okay? Should we do this? It is a decision to do it." The poor people can get any damage. Do you understand? The poor people can get any damage. Even if they are there, when I give you my prayer, God will help me. God gives me a saint. He says, "You planned it. I will bless you if you do it." "Where are you going? How do I bless you?" "If you do it, I will do it." But we should not only see the glory. We should also see Ruth's goodness. We should see how she is. She has a good fortune. Others say, "Your goodness is a gift." So when he was in the church, I saw the glory. In the evening, when I was in Naomi's house, I was a great man. We will see you. Do you wish me to be blessed, God? From my greatest mistake, comes God's greatest miracle. I thought. "How many people in Bethlehem have a baby? I won't leave Bethlehem. How many people are there?" How many are there? Boas is like that. Then how many people have a baby in Bethlehem? He won't go to the mood. He is a good person. Why do they have David in their family? Am I right? A good family. Jesse is there. Obama is there. That is why David is there. That is why Jesus is there. The story is perfect. He says. From your worst mistake, comes your greatest miracle. That is the God I am. The God of the glory. The God of the world. In the evening, let me see. Don't you think? You have taken it. Go. G major. But what is important in the story? The poor people are important. They are all angry. He is a great person. But can we be focused on God?
You are there. Your heart is beating. You are doing it. Your heart is beating. You are there. Your heart is beating. You are doing it. Your heart is beating. Jesus. You are mine. In my heart. You are in my heart. Jesus. You are mine. In my heart. You are in my heart. I will do it. I will do it. I will do it. I will do it. My friends. My dreams. My friends. My dreams. I left you. I left you. Jesus. You are mine. In my heart. You are in my heart. Jesus. You are mine. In my heart. You are in my heart.
I ask you. Our family leader, we are the poor people. No matter what, Lord, you will leave your place. When you ask, you will know what is right for you. We will not go to the mood. We will see. How many families were in Bethlehem? But this family is a poor man. When the baby is born, it is a baby. We will get the poor people. If it is not, we will not get them. Then, God, you are watching. When the baby is born, Elimelech got the poor man. He thought that it is a poor man. But that poor man got some damage. When we are leaders, we will do everything for our family. We will help our family. We will help our children. We will do everything for our family. But we have to understand. Lord, even if we do well, we will not get the poor man. We will not be able to do it. We will leave the family. When we are in the family, two sons are gone. But if you have a son, God, you will be a good person. We will do this. You are our family. You are our family. You are our family. I say to you. Sometimes, you are a saint. We will do everything for our family. When you are sleeping, you are a poor man. You will see. Is it good for our family? Should we do this? We will understand. When you do everything for your family, the poor people are in your family. It is a poor man. You have studied it. Your family is my family. I will do it. Do you want to? I will not do it. I will not do it. When you have a baby, I will do it. I will do it. In the evening, he is talking to the poor people. From the house of bread, a guy who calls God as king is going to the dustbin because there is no bread in the house of bread. He says. You will get the damage. Quite a strong thing to face. Naomi did nothing. I have no sons. I have no sons. When I came, I was scared. I was scared. But God has a saint. You will leave. I do not know. God is a great person. He cursed me. He blamed me. She is going on blabbering. Even if he is there, he will scold me. He will help me. Hallelujah. Ruth, who is God? There is no revelation. But I will help God. The poor man who did this. God only wished for it. He saw it. He is a great person. He wished for it. Hallelujah. God, my life is a good thing. You are a person. I do not want to be a bad person. You are a person. There is no coincidence in the life of your children, Lord. There is only divine orchestration. Hallelujah. You are not a person in your life. When you are a child, you are not a person. You are not a person. Who will you meet? When Joseph left his house, at that time, you are not a person. God did it. Hallelujah. He did it. Yes, yes. He is not a person. You are a person. You are a person. Your children will succeed. At the same time, Ruth's goodness was seen. You saw the blessings. When we asked first, our destiny changed. Our fortunes changed. The people who have a baby are like Jesus. They found the saints. First, Boas said. Then, Boas, who is it? He is sitting there. He says. Now, who are you? He is not a person. He is a person. God is watching. We will get the family. My mother said, "You will tell them. You will get the family." He said, "We will get the family." Then he asked, "Will you redeem us, king and redeemer?" When he saw it, he said, "I will be a redeemer." It is a hard day. "Mother, we have left the poor man. We have left some things. Do you want to meet?" "Do you want to meet?" "I will change my fortunes, Lord. I will not be a saint." Let's talk about it. "I will change my fortunes, Lord. You are a saint. I will not be a saint. I know you have a family." "Will you redeem me, God? Will you redeem me, God? Will you redeem me, God? Lord, I have messed up. I have taken wrong decisions. I will get the family." "I will get the family." I did a lot of things. I did a lot of things. I did a lot of investments. I did a lot of things. I am in a bad situation. "What is it?" "What is it?" "Mother," he said. "He is a saint." "I saw my blessings. He helped me. I gave you what I do not deserve, Lord. Thank you for your redemption." How many good people were in Bethlehem? They were there. But we saw. When he was in the family, Jesus was not there. Everything was done. Everything was done. He bought it. Even if God forgives you, he will come. When he came to the family, it does not matter how much you messed up, sir. One U-turn will transform your life. When he was in the mood, he came to Bethlehem. He asked, "Do you want to?" "You want to." "Do you want to?" "Mother, you are watching. He is a great person. He is a saint. Let's talk about it. Ruth is talking about him. "You are a person.